Welcome everyone, thank you for coming. Originally, Dr. Girardi had asked if we get from the Selectmen's. This was technically going to be the Selectmen's meeting, but this was literally the only open room in town. And I know how you all know how that goes. There's just too much going on. We prefer the auditorium, but there's a health fair or I don't know. So, welcome to the Selectmen's. We really appreciate you being here tonight. I'm so happy to turn it over to Chris. Welcome to the audience. Our plan tonight, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we have some things to talk about in terms of the budget and the special ed revolving fund. And I think these boards would like to talk to each other a lot. So, we're really happy there's an audience tonight, but not like a typical school committee meeting. There probably won't be as much opportunity for comments and I don't want to say interruption because you know we enjoy the public discussion and we're often thankful for the comments and we're often directed in the direct right direction with the comments. But so, there might be some time at the end, but I think tonight's meeting is for... No? Again, seriously, is this not on? Have you made sure it's going on?
Yes.
How about now? How about now? Is there any difference? Because I'm going to lose my mind. Thank you. All right, awesome. Thank you.
That took two minutes. I love it.
Time's up.
All right. So, once again, welcome everyone. Again, I think we'll do a lot of the talking tonight. There might be some time at the end, but we really appreciate you being here. I know parents have some concerns about the budget as well. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Chris.
So, the reason we came tonight was that prior to our last Selectmen's meeting, Dr. Girardi had asked us for an amount of time to go through this process. And one, it was a school vacation week, which would mean a lot of people that wanted to come were away or weren't available. So, we decided to move it till tonight. And so, we're here at the request of Dr. Girardi and Dawn. It's actually, so it's really, I don't know whose meeting it is. It's nobody's in particular's meeting. Dawn and I have been kicking that back all afternoon. But so, it's really a true joint meeting. It's the third one we've had in this budget season to discuss this budget. And you know, so we look forward to hearing from the school committee and then possibly some comments if there's any to be made at the end of that. And then, you know, working with the school committee again to, you know, create a better situation than we're in today. We have to open our meeting, so I moved to open the meeting at 7:05. All in favor of opening the meeting? So, our meeting is open, so you guys have the floor, yes?
I think...
We're your guests.
Thank you. We listed two items, and the first one, I'll let our business manager, Michelle Resendez, start us off, but the title of it is Special Education Reserve Fund. So, Michelle, if you could give an introduction to that, that would be wonderful.
Sure. Basically, what this fund is, I'm just going to read. There was Municipal Modernization Act passed back in November, I believe, and this reserve fund account was a portion of it. Basically, what it does is it amends Mass General Law, Chapter 40, by inserting Section 13D, which allows schools, districts to establish a reserve fund to pay without further appropriation for unanticipated unbudgeted costs of special education out of district tuition or transportation. Deposits can be made via appropriation or a budget transfer. The balance in this reserve fund shall not exceed 2% of the annual net school spending of the school district. So, basically, what this fund is for is that if at any point in the future that there are funds that are in our budget that we would like to hold in order to put towards the stabilization fund for future use is really what it comes down to.
Could you just tell us again, because I didn't write it quick enough, the chapter and section?
It's Chapter 40, Section 13D.
Thank you.
And I think I handed out the Mass Gov, Department of Ed's advisory.
Advisory.
Thank you. Couldn't think of the word. On it, just so that you guys could take a look at. And basically, what we're asking for tonight is just the approval from both committees to create the stabilization fund. And then, it will need to go to a full town vote, probably at the fall meeting for the town.
Michelle, can you repeat again, what percentage is it that you can't exceed?
Sure. It cannot, the balance of the reserve fund will not exceed 2% of the annual net school spending of the school district.
Can I interrupt just for a minute? For...
Mike.
Can I interrupt for a minute and just, I know we're talking about a lot of laws, but for the audience, I just want to explain that the biggest budget driver traditionally has been our special ed cost. There, you can't budget for them. They're unexpected. And so, the Mass Municipal...
Modernization.
...Modernization Act that the governor just signed in recognized that that's a problem with schools, that even though the state tries to create the circuit breaker account to offset those expenses, that it's prudent for the schools to create their own reserve fund, a lot like the town, the FinCom has their own reserve fund for those unexpected expenses. So, what we're recommending is something that the governor just signed into law that is, shows prudence on our side so that in the future, it would help with the, you know, we wouldn't have to ask the town for extra money because we would have this money to count on for those unexpected costs. And so, it's, I'm trying to make it as simple as possible. And at the end of the year, oftentimes, you know, there's some unexpected funds. You can't budget for every single pencil. Sometimes you don't order two gross, you only order one gross, and you have, you know, an extra, some extra money. You would put that money into this account so that in future years, you would have a savings account for these unexpected special ed costs. So, that's a simplistic version of it. I know Michelle was talking kind of on the legal level.
Sorry. That's okay.
I just wanted to explain that.
And I just wanted to point out too, is that these funds can only be spent on special education costs. So, it's not a reserve fund where we can, you know, expend the money however we want. It has to be used on special ed funds.
Okay. Kevin? Kevin, I got a quick question for you. In years past, if that money was sent back to the town, did it become part of the general fund or was it always part of the school, basically targeted for the school budget? In other words, is this changing anything other than leaving it skipping a step?
So, end of year, department turnbacks would close out and would essentially close out at the end of the year would, if there was any turnbacks from the school department, would close out as free cash. So, you know, if they were to turn back $100,000 of, you know, of their budget at the end of, you know, June 30 without any encumbrance, that would then close out as free cash.
So, just to clarify, you need a vote of both boards separately?
Both boards, yep.
Okay.
Michelle, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, what's the, how is this differentiate between the circuit breaker allocation and use versus stabilization? What, are we talking about the same?
Well, it's the same expenses. So, basically, what it is, is just an additional place that we can get funds to cover our special education costs. So, just like how when I do the general fund budget and that we present to the town, I reduce what we, if we're budgeting 1.7 million in special ed out of district costs, I ask for, you know, whatever it is minus what circuit breaker would give us. So, this, it would be another portion that would add to that. So, it would kind of almost reduce, in some sense, what we would be asking in future years to cover our special education costs. It's just a way for us to be fiscally prudent and with our money at the end of the year. You know, most towns and most districts go on kind of like a spending spree because they don't like to turn back cash to the town. Basically, what this does is it eliminates that almost want or need because we know that these funds are going back into an account that we can use towards our special education costs. So, it kind of defrays the whole, oh my God, we got $275,000 worth of special ed costs that we didn't see at the beginning of the year, that here they come now. It just gives us another mode to save for that, prepare for it, and not have to come back to the town to ask for it.
Michelle, is it fair to ask then that in truly exceptional spending years, where historically, say, the circuit breaker funds may already be exhausted, that this would give us an additional funding mechanism for those...
Yep. It's exactly, that is 100% exactly what it's set up for, yep.
So, when you say that we would not ask for as much money in the budget at the beginning of the year, one of the things that could happen though is we have unanticipated expenses that come in mid-year. So, would you spend that? So, it just confused me when you said that because it sounds like we would then use that to put towards the budget at the beginning of the year as opposed to using it for unexpected or unanticipated that could come up mid-year.
It actually, you actually could do both. What it does is that we'll know in the upcoming year how much money is in the stabilization account. So, just like the town appropriates a certain portion of their stabilization account to cover certain things, we might do that as well. Typically, we wouldn't want to do that. We would want to keep it there for if we have an unexpected cost. It just eliminates our need to then go to the town mid-year and say, hey, we need $275,000 more because we just don't have it here.
What's the magnitude of what's been getting turned, I'm sorry, Terrence. What's the magnitude of what's been getting turned around annually, like over the last eight, Kevin, for three years?
90, 140, and 103.
Yeah, it's about $100,000.
Quick question. Pretty loud, I don't know if I need the mic. But there's a paragraph down here that says funds in the reserve fund can only be expended or transferred out. Can you expand on that? That reads to me as even after this is passed, you still can't do anything with the money unless both boards agree to do something with it?
Correct. That is 100% correct, yeah. So, you still have control. It would still have to be approved by school committee as well as the Board of Selectmen to be expended. So, it would probably come on as a separate warrant. Now, I'm completely new at this. This is a brand new. But Mike Guzzo and I have talked extensively over this. We've also talked to, oh, see, there he is, right there. We've also talked to Jay Sullivan at the Department of Ed on how this works. And we would need approval both from the school committee and you in order to expend the fund. So, we talked about it probably coming in as a separate warrant at some point and getting the approval for that so that it's all on one.
And just to clarify, you don't mean warrant article. You mean like a roll warrant.
No, no, I'm sorry. Like expense warrant. I know it's...
No, just to clarify, because I know that word gets thrown around a lot.
Yeah.
But yeah, so it sounds like a FinCom reserve transfer. So, it would go to us and also to you, which is actually kind of a nice double control.
Yeah.
So, then, my second question, I think, which is, there's no impetus for you to have to spend this money every single year that it's...
No, no.
Right.
So, just to tailor off that, unlike circuit breaker, you're only allowed to carry one year?
Right.
There's no requirement in this fund. If they, if the funds weren't needed, they wouldn't have to expend them.
Correct.
But in circuit breaker, you can only carry one year.
You can only carry up to 2%?
2%, correct.
So, the total district spend, all right? Which includes...
It's of net school spending for the entire town, yeah.
So, we're probably...
Yeah.
So, who would set the maximum balance to be in the fund?
I'm sorry?
Who would determine the maximum balance allowed in the fund?
Well, I think the ma...
Because that's set. You set a maximum balance that's allowed.
2% of net school spending. I think if we ever had that much money, we wouldn't even have to meet. But that's just me. If we ever, as a town, had that much extra money.
Well, that's the maximum, but that doesn't mean it has to be the maximum.
Right. I mean, it's kind of like, I look at this as like OPEB and capital stabilization. You're funding it to the best of your abilities.
I just wanted to ask, Michelle, it says that it's of the required...
Net school sp, sorry. It says that it's of the required net school spending. And so, I was wondering, isn't that the, that's the, because we're above our foundation budget, so isn't that of the Chapter 70 required budget? So, it's not even our full school budget of what we're spending. It's what the state requires us to fund.
Okay. So, if there's no further questions on this side, I'll make a motion to approve Michelle's request to, what should the motion look like?
To approve the creation of the stabilization fund.
Okay. So, to approve the creation of the special education stabilization fund. And so, to be clear, it would be a vote of both boards, and then it would go to fall town meeting if it went forward.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Yeah, I think it probably would be, I think it would cover it under, you know, not reasonably anticipated. It's on their budget.
Some discussion as to whether...
No prob, no, it's no problem at all.
We're just trying to figure out if we can actually vote.
Okay.
Tonight, anyway, because it wasn't on our agenda.
You know, that, I have no question about, you know, the program, the thing, I'm just kind of...
Oh, did we put out two different agendas?
Yeah. So, our agenda was not, it wasn't listed specifically, so our agenda didn't call for a vote. So, I wouldn't want to vote tonight and then have somebody tell us, it's our meeting, you guys didn't vote, so we'll vote at our next meeting. We'll put it on our agenda for our next meeting.
That sounds great.
Mike will come in and give us a spiel, and then we'll vote.
Okay, that sounds great.
That way it'll be done. So, I just don't want to do it procedurally. Someone will call us on it, and we'll, then we're looking to go back in the spring, and it just delays the process.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's looking for you to violate open meeting laws.
No, no, we're big fans of...
I'm sure there's about seven people out there that could quote us chapter and verse right now.
So, we'll see. So, we'll just do it at our next meeting, put it on our agenda.
Sounds good.
Vote, and then let you know, and we'll, you know, let Mike and you guys know, so we'll be good to go.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, the only other item on the agenda tonight was basically just to talk about where the school budget is. We've met a few times, obviously, this year. We would just like to just sort of say, you know, we all know that after receiving the town administrator's recommended budget at the February joint meeting, it left us about 376,000 less than level service funding. And then, in the time since then, as we look at the new out-of-district expenses, and just to give you an idea of what that means, an out-of-district is when we get a child who will not be educated in Maynard but needs to go to a school outside of Maynard. So, that would cover a child's tuition and transportation to a specialized program. So, anytime we're adding housing in Maynard, I always like to throw in a plug that we have a lot of housing and we have a lot of kids that are being serviced out of district already. So, maybe not the most appropriate thing to say, but that's where these numbers come from. So, even as recently as February, we didn't know about these kids. We will have these kids come September, and we have to account for that in our budget. So, at this point, we are less than level service funded at 651,000 roughly. So, really, all we're here tonight is just to sort of let you know that. We would obviously come to any meeting and give you those updates. It just happens to be here at Fowler. You know, from my perspective, and I don't know if I'm speaking for the whole school committee, so I really want them to chime in, but I'm respectfully asking if there are any additional funds that you look at helping us with this. But I'm also very aware that funds are very tight, so that is not an unknown fact, so...
I guess I would just say that we, we had gone through, just to be clear that we've all been working on really making sure that this process becomes more transparent. This year, we were able to send, I don't know how many pages this budget document was, in, starting, was that October or November?
It's over 40 pages.
It was over 40 pages that they were able to send to the town at their request so they could see things. And they've been really doing due diligence to understand the itemized budgets of the town and, I'm sorry, on the school side of the town budget to really understand what our budget is made of and why it is what it is. So, after the February 11th meeting, this, that's when this hit. And so, that's part of why we wanted to come together and really look at how we even further collaborate. This is kind of new for all of us to figure out what this looks like. As you can see, we're trying to figure it out. So, so, just to understand that this is, having this new hit, it happens. It needs to happen, and it's the right thing to do. But then, we have to understand, look at what we can do from there. And that's why we wanted to, we agreed together, we wanted to be able to start with having a joint meeting and then really look at continuing conversations from there. So, and there have been a lot going on. We're just building on that. So, that's one thing I just wanted to mention for the audience and just to set the stage for whatever else we might say.
And just some of the documents that we sent over today, just to get everyone on the same page if they haven't been to our meetings or anything like that, just sort of describing what we're cutting this year. And it just really, to me, shows that we're really scraping sort of the bottom of the barrel of what we cut. These cuts hurt. Some of them are simple, you know, switching over to free Google Classroom, the first one listed, that's a no-brainer. That's something we would have done anyway. Switching to have teachers lead recess at Green Meadow, that's a long time coming, in my personal opinion. There's some things that we can absorb. You know, the Community Connections Program has been outsourced due to lack of participation, really, at that point. So, those are things that would have come anyway as any department we oversee, that you folks oversee, would be looking to make smart moves. You know, redoing your contracts for your, you know, your copiers and things like that. It's all small money, but just now that we're looking at cutting back on librarians, cutting back on music, cutting back on custodians and secretaries, assistant principal position at Fowler, it's really painful, you know? And I know that you folks, especially Chris, who was at our last meeting, see the community's concerned. I know you here are concerned, and I know to some degree your hands are tied. But we're really, you know, we're really hurting, and I know you know. I know you get that. And next year, we'd be looking at things like raising class sizes to probably 25 to 27 if this trend continues. So, I think we've all been sort of saying on the side that next year, we need to meet starting in September and more often and more openly, whatever it takes with or without our administrators. But these boards need to get together and be making better plans. But even this year, we're still really hurting. So, really, that's just what we're here to tell you tonight, so...
Can I ask a general question, Michelle and Mike? We had a discussion back, it was one of the first times that I had met you when you came into the office or into the Selectmen's room. And we talked about the whole issue of combining, which has been going on for years, the discussion, but it's never made progress, the combining of our, our systems, because there might be a cost savings there. Not grand, not going to solve the problem entirely, but it's, it's one of those steps along the way. How far, if at all, have you made, and is that still on the radar to make that?
It's already in the process. We actually worked on our chart of accounts today together. We are hopefully, hopefully going live August 1st with the new financial software, which will be able to communicate with the town, so there'll be no more double entry.
Right.
And that's where it will save a lot of time and effort and money.
Right.
The other thing is, is actually with this financial software, we're saving money on what we're paying yearly. It's only like $4,000, but it's surprisingly nicer, better, cheap, and cheaper than what we are originally paying.
Very good.
Yeah, once we get through the implementation stage.
Mr. Gavin, I'd just also like to thank Kevin Sweet and Andrew because they came and met with us, and they made it happen. It wouldn't happen if it wasn't for their, I'm sorry. I just want to thank Kevin Sweet and Andrew Scribner-McLean because they came to the schools and helped us make that happen. So, I just want to thank them because that was about a month or two ago, they made it happen.
Yep. Good stuff. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
We started this process, Michelle and I, earlier than this whole thing.
Yeah.
We looked at different possibilities.
Yeah, we went through...
My standpoint to say is me money, because now Kevin, you've paid a lot of it, there's no duplication.
Right.
We have a lot of funds. And basically, we're talking about saving at least minimum five hours plus a week plus, you know, even more.
Yep.
That we're not going to have to do things that have to do with that. We're working on right now charter accounts that you see when you do the budget. Five lines?
Right, we expanded that.
Twenty lines.
Yeah.
And the opportunity to expand it even more, the board is still alive, to be presented to the board. So, if you will decide you want to do five or more lines, then we can easily go in.
I'm just, I'm excited to hear that because that's one of those things, again, that shows, and it shows the public that we're making progress. This has been something that we've been talking about, and for whatever reason, it never worked out, and here we are. We are getting there, and apparently, July 1.
You and Kevin, we were able to...
So, congratulations.
...to scope, you know, step stage two to the final stage. But we started earlier.
Yeah, so I...
Michelle first game, if you were to do this one.
Yeah. And I think the other benefit to this too, and it's a huge benefit for you guys as well as us and me for not continuously going gray over this stuff, but the reporting features and the projection features, you know, there'll be a lot more financial analysis that can be done. And I know that's a lot of what you had asked for previously. And it's, it's because we're going to, the town accounts are going to be integrated with our accounts, it'll be a lot easier for you to see. It won't be like a completely different world type of information. So, that's another, you know, really big benefit to this.
Do you got a dueling mics? Ladies before gentlemen.
I was, this is to change the topic a little bit.
Same.
Okay. What I wanted to say is, I know we've talked a lot, you know, we, I love that we're having this meeting. I love that we're collaborating more and more. And one of the things I'm interested in talking about is what is the appropriate forum where we can talk to residents? And, you know, as a school committee, we've engaged in prioritizing sessions where we talk about what our vision is and how is that going to affect what we fund and the decisions we make with regards to program? And what I wonder is if we could engage in that sort of thing together. I know now, probably at the end of the budgeting season, isn't, isn't the time to be doing that? But what, what would such a meeting look like? Or is there a possibility of perhaps sending out some kind of a survey to Maynard residents where we say, you know, of all these services that we do provide, if we get into a situation where we're making decisions about which services we have to cut and which we, you know, are going to keep, obviously, we don't want to cut any services. But I just, I'd love to hear from members up here and from members of the board, just what, what, what could that look like? Because often, we come to meetings like this, and it's great, you know, we're collaborating and we're disseminating information to the public. But I wonder, the beginning of next year's budgeting season, if there could be, you know, some sort of, whether it's a meeting or whether it's a survey, where we're actually reaching out to get some information from the people that have elected us.
Well, I won't answer that question specifically, but I won't, I will say I don't disagree with that approach. It's one way to collect information. What I wanted to add was, I've had individual conversations with Mary, with Bethland, with Dawn at different points about working together a little more cohesively as two boards. But as you can see, it's very difficult because of the way the laws are structured, right? It's very hard to get things done with two full-fledged boards, with all the administration folks that have to be involved at some point, right? And also be open to the public. So, oftentimes, things don't get done on the agenda. So, one of the things I did want to talk about is, we'd like to continue this as a regular meeting, which by both charters doesn't exist. So, we don't really have to have these meetings together, but I think it makes sense because this budget cycle is passed. We're going to do what we can to help where we are, but we're looking forward to, at least in my view, I'm looking forward to next year's budget. And if we don't get in front of it now, we're going to have a difficult time next year as well because costs are still rising and we still have to provide services from both sides, whether it's school or town. So, you have my pledge to continue. I think it makes sense to have a more semi-regular meeting between all board members. And no disrespect towards any of the administrative folks in the room, but oftentimes, I think it'll be more effective if just the board members, the elected members are actually meeting together, obviously, in public. I know there's certain agenda items that may take expertise like Bob would provide or Kevin or Andrew or whoever it might be. But overall, I would look forward to actually building camaraderie with the school committee and understanding the things that are most important in the schools that they talk about. Because we don't make decisions on what gets cut in the schools. That's not our purview. We're looking at the overall town budget. We're looking at the overall town budget. So there's a lot of things we could be educated on, myself especially, about what might be more important. Maybe a survey is the route to go, to get a little more information. I do know there's an avid amount of parents who have reached out to us on a number of occasions over the last few months, really passionate about the effect that the budget was going to have on their children in their school this year. And we're rarely cognizant of that fact, and I want you guys to understand that. We're not here to make cuts, that's not our job. Our job is to balance a budget. And I think this is a good step going forward to make sure we're on par next year, to understand where the challenges are going to be so we can get ahead of them. That's all I really wanted to say. Thank you.
Can I add one, a couple of comments to that? One idea for finding the time with both boards. There are several months where, or several months throughout the year, it might only add three or four meetings as a group, but there are several weeks, several months where you have one week that we don't meet because we meet the first and the third, and there's this extra week that falls in. And sometimes, we throw in, you know, let's talk about something that's on the agenda for that particular week. But if we can agree as boards to put that week aside, whether it's the Tuesday or the Thursday, that extra week of the particular month, that's one way that we can have a scheduled, we know it's going to be. And again, it's only, I think that only happens three or four times a year, but it's a start. The other thing, and I mentioned this at the forum a couple of weeks ago, was the whole idea of reinstituting and reinvigorating the Budget Subcommittee that we used to have years ago, that I think would be extremely valuable to begin the whole process, where basically, as I explained at that meeting, you have two members of your board, two members of this board, two members of the Finance Committee, the Police Chief, the Fire Chief, the, you know, and basically whoever wants to show up can show up, as long as, there's only certain members that are official members, so you don't have open meeting laws, but et cetera. And so we have those monthly, regular meetings throughout the year, so that there's always everybody on board. And the Police Chief can comment, hey, by the way, I've got, you know, an issue with overtime that's coming up, so we're aware of that, and you guys have issues that you have to explain to us as well. And everybody debates and discusses and whatever, but it's another opportunity to have that conversation. So I encourage us to do that, and I think it's a good way. And then you add on that extra meeting, then you've got a heck of a lot of conversation going on that, right now, we might not have going on.
You had mentioned, David, at another school, you guys at the Board of Selectmen or the School Committee, at the Board of Selectmen meeting, that there was another town that you had felt was doing, that we could just learn from for collaborating. You had mentioned, was it North Andover?
Oh, that was for, North Andover, I was talking about relative to the way that they address their capital.
Okay.
And without the need, they did all sorts of capital projects without the need for any overrides, and they did it through planning, fiscal conserv, you know, just fiscal planning that made it work for them. And they got a revitalized school, a senior center, and a fire station, basically without any need for a debt exclusion override.
Okay.
And so that's, I talked about that, yeah.
Right. Because I would think that would be, that would be part of these conversations. There's the operating budget, and then there's the capital needs that clearly are also, there are many on, within the schools as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I don't disagree with Selectman Gavin's discussion, but I will say, I mean, it's just of transparency, I would prefer to see all board members at these meetings to start, to see where we go. But I don't think, you know, long-term logistically, that's probably a smart way to go, David. But I think, especially with an election coming up with potential changeovers, I think it would be interesting to have everybody who is going to have a chance to make an impact with a town decision, to get a chance to sit in on these meetings. So that's my only difference of opinion on that.
Hi. My name is Jennifer O'Leary. I'm sorry, I came in a little late. My daughter was coming back from Disney, so she got.
Yay!
And I'm not sure if we are allowed to make public comment in this meeting.
Well, you said we'd hold them to the end, but it's kind of quiet, so why don't you throw it out there, maybe it'll get us going.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Jennifer O'Leary. I'm a parent of three kids in our district. I have a typical child who just went to Disney, she's a sophomore, and I have two students on IEPs, Connor and Melissa. And Melissa's in eighth grade at the high school, and Connor is in fifth grade here at Fowler. And they have had excellent education in Maynard thus far. We're very happy with the schools. And as far as, you know, the cuts that we have to make, and I certainly understand that it's not your job as the Board of Selectmen to choose, and it's really the job of the School Committee, and we have these monetary limits, and that's fine. But I disagree with the statement that this budget season is over. It's not June 30th, and frankly, if a child at any point in time has an out-of-district placement, they get placed, because that's the law. So I think the majority of this audience is interested in talking about the budget and advocating for the schools, and that's probably why we're all here. So I just wanted to throw that out there, that, you know, our ranking is not number one in the state, so we still have a lot of work to do. And once we get to number one, then maybe we can start making cuts and, you know, lowering the foundation. When you have students that have a lot of needs, one of the things, you know, people think of special ed, your special ed has to be really good, but what's really not as clear to people who don't, as I call it, live the life, is the base of the foundation of general education. You can't get to good special education and specialized services if there's not a good foundation base of education. And I look at these breaks and these cuts, and that's the foundation that we're talking about. And so my kids can't get good services in special ed if we don't have good general ed. And I just want to make that distinction, that that's really the crux of what we're talking about, you know? The law is the law with special education. I'm well-known to the members of the School Committee around all that, and we're all pretty clear, we have to serve the kids that we have to serve. But this base of foundation impacts all students in Maynard. And I would just ask that, that's really thought about, you know, I don't know whether all of you have children in the school system still, maybe you do, maybe you don't, but one of the comments I used to like to say to some older folks that weren't so interested in paying taxes that go to the schools is, well, do you want smart people running this town later? Or do you want, you know, some kind of dumb people running this town later? Because a lot of people that live in Maynard stay here their whole lives, and now they teach here, they live here, they work here, and someday, they'll be on the Board of Selectmen, and someday, they'll be on the School Committee, and how do we want that to look? And I think that that's what we're faced with, that's what we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, just to, just to. Just to clarify, the fiscal year is not over, but the budget season, and when Terrence talked about the budget season, what he was talking about was the season in which town government formulates the budget with the School Committee. That piece of it is more or less over because the warrants are already in for the special town, for the town meeting in the special. It's clearly, the fiscal year is still open, it opens till June 30th, and, you know, the five of us are committed to, you know, doing everything we can for the schools. We had a similar shortfall last year, and we were able to make a significant portion of it up, and we still got $90,000 back to the general budget from the schools last year. So this group of five people, we're well-aware of that, and none of us want to see the base lowered at all. I can speak for, you know, David, Terrence, and myself, we've all had children go to the schools here, and still are in some cases. So we don't want to see the base erode at all, and we're committed to not letting that happen. But that doesn't change the fact that there's only a finite amount of time and a finite amount of money that we can put into each bucket, in the schools' bucket, is, you know, by far the largest in town. And every year that we go through this, that I've been on the board, there's been a shortage, and we've worked together in this manner, or sometimes less than in this manner, to close that gap. And we're committed fully to that again this year. I was speaking with Kate Hogan today, I called her out of her state budget meeting to ask her opinion on some of these issues, and where we're going to go, and she's going to talk to me next week when she's done with that process and get back to me with some ideas of, you know, where are some possibilities, probabilities, and, you know, where are our dreams? And so we're going to have that discussion with Kate early next week. But as five people, we're fully committed to your children and to the schools, and there's no, there should be no question about that. And also, we are, you know, we are committed to, you know, finish the fiscal year responsibly, but the budget season is over as far as the formulating goes. So that was Terrence's remark.
Yep.
My name's Anne Stackwitz. I have three kids in the Maynard schools, I have a sixth grader, and I have two kids at Green Meadow. I'm also the president of the PTO at Green Meadow. And a question that's come up a lot is that I've heard that 52% of the town budget is going to the schools. Is that about the right percentage? And how, my question is, how does that compare to other towns? So a lot of parents have been saying that.
That, that's basically the number. There's a 17, I believe the number in this budget is 17 million, but on top of that is some insurance costs, some energy costs, and there's an additional eight to nine million dollars that is part of the school expense that's not part of the school budget. So it's approximately 26 million of a 42 million, Kevin?
Correct.
26 million of a $42 million budget.
Okay.
But that, yeah, so.
So over 50%.
Yeah, so it's an even higher number, but that doesn't, you know, that doesn't alleviate us all of the responsibility to your kids. And I remember you from the last meeting, and you loved the fourth.
I talk a lot.
You loved the fourth grade lead team, and, you know, so.
Yes, I do.
I mean, you know, so I understand exactly where you are. And my daughter taught at the Maynard schools, and she was laid off, and, you know, she got laid off, so she's a victim of this. So I know what the teachers and the people are going through, but, you know, we still are charged with making some decisions that we don't like. And I have more gray hair than Michelle. So I out-gray her because, you know, especially since I was here two weeks ago, you know, some of these things, you know, not that they didn't hit home before, but when you see it and it's emoted, it's a totally different situation. So I understand what you're saying, and, you know, it's a big portion of the budget, but that doesn't.
It is.
It doesn't alleviate us the responsibility to try and continue to add to that, to make everything whole.
Right, right. And I mean, I was shocked when I heard that number. I was like, it sort of brought me, it put in perspective to me, like, wow, we do get a lot of the money, and it is really hard. I mean, we still have fire and service and other municipal departments that obviously need the money. So I don't envy your position, but how does it compare to other towns? I mean, are other towns around, like, half go to schools, or is it a quarter? Because a lot of parents have asked the question, and so I've said, let me find out.
I don't know, but we'll find out.
Can I?
Okay.
Just in terms, because I happen to have the Finance Committee's preparing an analysis, and I happen to have it in front of me, their analysis from the fiscal year 18 budget is that education, Maynard is 43%. Just because I happen to have that document. So 43%.
Yeah, that's solely education costs, when you factor in.
Are they not counting health insurance?
Yeah, correct.
Employee benefits is 20%, and I know, you know, the accommodated cost is something that I think we want to be careful sort of getting into.
Well, I'm going to put that one aside, because that's a whole thing. But just, I mean, health insurance, we should, if that's.
Employee benefits is another 20%, so if you divide, you know, how much of the percent of employees that the school department has versus the other department, which we did that analysis, it was something like 200 and 20.
About two-thirds.
Employees, so two-thirds of that 20%.
Historically, the numbers I always hear are 60-40 split, the 60 on the school side, but it's always hard to use that because that could compare us to a town with, like, all the towns around us, right? Like Lincoln said, very Concord, Carlisle, and Acton, Boxborough, they all saw this coming, however many years ago. So we missed our opportunity probably 20 years ago, I can't even guess, to regionalize. So it will always be a big part of Maynard's budget.
Right.
We can hope to bring in more revenue, we can hope to hopefully maybe not chase so much housing, to keep adding kids, because we add kids, we add teachers, we add healthcare. It's sad that that's what it is, but, you know, we're kind of on an island now. So we own our school system, you know, there's no one left to regionalize with. So I'm even hesitant to say 60-40, and the 60 is the schools, because we don't know what it's going to look like. You know what I mean? I don't want to say 70.
So you're saying those towns are 60-40, 60 goes to the budget.
I don't want to quote anything, but that's sort of, when I was on the Board of Selectmen, that was always what sort of the standard was. When you had towns who just couldn't agree and couldn't agree, there was sort of this 60-40, okay, fine. And I'm not saying, we're not even at that. We actually get along great, we have really good discussions. It's just an untenable situation, right? This is a wonderful small town, and it will always be expensive to run it. And that's just where we're, that's my personal opinion, being on both boards.
Can I add though? I know, I, yep. Myself, Jennifer, and Michelle have all worked in multiple districts.
Yeah.
And in every one of those districts, it's always 60 to 70% of the town or the district's budget, so.
Goes to the schools, so that.
Goes to the schools. So it's not uncommon.
Okay.
We don't have the, as Dawn mentioned, we don't have the economy of scale.
Right.
That other towns do, so that makes it even harder for our town.
Right.
But it's not uncommon to, for the school bucket to be the largest bucket in any town budget.
Okay, thank you.
Just one last point on that, and the reason that is, I think, is because we have the most employees, right? So if our biggest cost will always be our salaries, we're always going to have a million more teachers than we have fire, DPW, and police. So if salaries are the biggest cost driver in the town, and god, the health insurance, I don't even want to touch that one, that's what it is, you know? So the 60-40 or the 65-35 in some towns, we have great people working for us, and we have to take care of them.
Yeah.
You know, they deserve a decent wage, they deserve health insurance, but that's why, honestly, that's the biggest.
That's a good point.
That's the biggest part of our budget, honestly, is salaries.
We're like the biggest employer, essentially.
Yeah, we're the biggest employer, and I think you'll find that in any town, whether they're regionalized or not.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
So if I could, just add to some context for the audience in the room, they understand how municipal budgeting works. We do our revenue projections late summer, start to pull together revenue projections, which is extremely early in the budgeting process. A lot of unknowns are still going to remain out there for several more months, including local state aid that comes from the state, Chapter 70 money, things like that. But in November, you folks knew what our revenue would look like. Your request's at six and a quarter percent, so that everybody here understands what we were asking for. My department directive goes out, all budgets are due back the first Monday in January. With the requests that came back, we had, we had about 1.2 million in available revenue, and, you know, of that, the School Committee's request was just a little over 1.1. Basically, accounted for 95% of all of the available revenue, because as you understand, municipal budgets need to be balanced, right? We're not the state of Massachusetts or federal government for that matter. We have to balance a budget. So there's only so much money, right? And the maximum amount of money is that available revenue that is determined based on our revenue projections. At six and a quarter percent, which is what the ask is, that would, that doesn't account for any increased costs related to the town side contractually, that doesn't account for employee benefits, which have gone up 22% in the last two years, that doesn't account for all of that. And the accommodated cost section is, you know, we can go back and forth on, but where we stand today is about 64% of the budget is the schools. Dawn's absolutely right, look, the communities that have memorandum agreements are based on 60-40 splits in town. A Brookline is one of the first in the state. Every time the revenue goes up 60%, every time the revenue goes up, they split it 60-40. But guess what? On the cut side, it's the same thing. So as health insurance impacts go up 13%, in Maynard, the town absorbs that. It doesn't get absorbed in the town and the school budget. So it's a significant impact that we have to consider. And, you know, the revenue availability is only so much money, so I think there needs to be some realistic expectations. I mean, I understand there's serious costs and there's issues that you folks are facing, but at the end of the day, there's only so much money, and we couldn't, as looking out for, you know, the Board of Selectmen looking out for every department in town, and, you know, every operation in town, in good faith, give all of the available revenue to the schools. It was just completely, yeah, it's impossible, because we have contractual increases, we have cost of living, everything else that goes up, much like they do on salaries, but we have other areas related to employee benefits, your trash collection service, solid waste and recycling, you know, your wastewater treatment facility, all have contractual increases that need to be funded in, you know, in that, only that dedicated amount of revenue. So I think it's important for everybody to realize that, you know, when you look at, when you look at that, yeah, they're short by so many things. I had to go back to other departments on the town side and tell them, we need to cut $800,000 out of the budget. Because what we're talking about now is what the school department needs, but we haven't had, on the town side, is a bigger conversation, well, what didn't the other departments get? What didn't police get? What didn't fire get? What didn't Public Works get? And when you factor that out, it's about $800,000 that got cut out of their requests. So just, so everybody understands the budget process and where things are at, you know, when we make these decisions as to a budget. I had to scrape and work really hard to get these guys 4%. They're lucky they got 4%, I'll be frank. 4% is a significant increase, and a lot of give-back on the town side in order to get us there. And if you look at the historical increases, I think the town has been, you know, very, very favorable to the schools in the increases they received. Now, I understand it doesn't meet their needs today, but their needs today on the FY18 budget requests are, you know, are just, they're impossible, fact of the matter, just based on available revenue.
Kevin, I just want to say, so I totally understand technically that's how it works, it's just that it ends up, what we're looking at is, which is why we really get to look up to next year, and understanding, like, is there a point at which we, as a whole community, decide what we're going to do? Because next year, I just know that there's, just from the feedback we've gotten from the community on the school side, and fully, fully aware that I haven't sat in all of your meetings, and so have not heard from the constituents you might hear from on the town side about the things that are most important and critical. But what's going to happen is that if we get to the point where next year we're looking at class sizes because we've cut this, and then we have to move to class sizes, is there a point at which we say, well, what is, what does the community need and what's most important? Looking at the whole picture as opposed to, here's your budget, now you're just going to have to understand, so even if it's just one time, we look at everything together and prioritize the community as opposed to on one side or the other? Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
I think, you know, just really quick, you know, what David talked about, what used to happen in the past, was really useful to have everyone in a room. And I remember being in some of those meetings, and we met sort of in the police station conference room, which was helpful in some ways, but I think the part that I always felt years later, looking back, that was missing is the sort of the town forums. And I know that Acton is doing something, it's called like Acton 2020, and there's a lot of towns, and I'm not just looking at the ones around us, who just have town forums, right? Because you've got folks telling you, and I'm just going to guess, the taxes are too high. And we've got folks saying, we're moving out of town unless the schools can at least tell us it's going to stay the same, you know, we can handle some cuts. So we've got lots of folks giving us input. But at the end of the day, I think tough choices are going to be coming down. And no offense to Kevin or Bob, but at some point, we, as the representatives elected by Maynard, have to help them understand the process that tough choices are going to be made. So whether, you know, whether taxes go up, which I don't want to see, or whether we start making choices about certain departments have to be on five to 10-year plans for their capital needs, and we start, stop, you know, we stop being so conservative in our revenue forecasts. And I don't think that we are, but I think that we have to look at how to fund the town going forward. Next year is a year I'm very worried about. And I think that I'm not alone, and I know I'm not alone, including you folks. So we need to meet, I think we all agree, and I think we can do some really great work. But at the end of the day, we have to have, you know, we can use any of the auditoriums, and we can say, you know, this forum, we're going to talk about revenue, or we're going to talk about costs or healthcare, and, you know, whatever it is. But other towns do it. I wonder if sometimes we're, you know, are we afraid of the answer? And I don't know, I'm just, now I'm just, you know, brainstorming.
We're afraid of the questions.
Yeah. But that's what's going to have to, you know, we need to know from the residents what's important to them. And we could be surprised, and they could say, we want all our money to go to the libraries. You know, I don't know, I mean, I love the library.
Well, I think that's Mary's point on some sort of survey of information from, I mean, it's one thing to get bombarded by emails before a meeting, right?
Right.
You know, 100 emails or whatever, on one side. But there are a number of people in town that aren't as proactive, but they do have a different feeling, right?
Right.
They need, you know, they need to be able to say something as well, too, right?
Sure.
A survey maybe is a good way to kick off some sort of communication. I like the idea of a forum.
Right.
Again, it can't devolve into something where everyone's fighting, right?
No, no, no.
That's why I'm saying, maybe I worded wrong, this budget year for us, really, we're looking forward to trying to solve next year's problem, which you've already agreed is a problem on the horizon.
Absolutely.
So that's, I'm not belittling this year's budget, I'm just saying, next year, we have to get in front of them, so this is a huge opportunity for us to do so.
Absolutely.
So Kevin, I want to circle back to something you said a minute ago, where everybody is getting pinched. And I'm sitting here looking at a one-page, single-spaced list of all the cuts we need to make in our department. And you said, you know, DPW's taken a hit, fire's taken a hit, police has taken a hit. What does that look like for them?
I can't sum that up to you in this meeting, but
Okay.
it means that there's $800,000 in requests
Mm-hmm.
that they felt that their department needed that they didn't get.
Okay, so they feel like they need it, but these are things that we already had that we now have to get rid of. So it's not like something that we're asking for as a need, like, we're physically removing things from our department now. So I guess I'm sensing a little bit of a disconnect there.
Yeah, you know, and I don't know, I mean, maybe the expansion of programs, I mean, the same document Jennifer referenced added 11 FTEs over the course of three years on what would have been level service budgets. So, you know, those types of things, you know, are going to have drastic salary impact increases for you guys. But if every one of those people take a health insurance plan, it's $150,000 budget impact on the town side.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, the schools are our flagship, you know? I don't know anyone, when they're thinking about coming to Maynard, that wants to go down and look at the trucks. They want to come, they want to tour the schools. They ask about class sizes, they ask about special ed programs, they ask about, you know, AP classes at the high school. Like, those are the questions that they ask when they're making a decision on whether they want to come to Maynard
Right.
or whether they want to stay in Maynard.
Agreed, because they take for granted that the road they got here to visit the school was in good shape.
I'm not saying that it's not.
People don't think of it when they turn the water faucet on, you know, water comes out, you know, those are just things that get taken for granted. There's no doubt, education is important, the services of education are important to every community, every thriving community that's going to, you know, be attractive, is going to help property values, those are all things that none of us, that I've ever heard, you know, disagree with.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's one department of a town operation, and it's significant, but it's not the only one.
Okay. Well, I think we need to continue to discuss as a community then our priorities, because I think we're a little bit out of whack on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ask a good question. Hi, Jessica Tool. I have three kids in the Maynard schools. And I just wanted to ask a question because, just for kind of a basis of comparison and some context and perspective, there's a cool chart here that shows like what Maynard asked going back to fiscal year 14, like what their fixed costs were, what the level service was, the growth budget, and what they actually received. Is that information available for the other towns, the other departments in town? Like, is that in the town report, or where can we get that information?
So some of that information's available, will be available in the document that Finance Committee put together a couple of years ago, and they've worked really hard in having put together a 57-page document, I can tell you how much of a challenge it is. So that will be available, some of that information will be available, Bob, town meeting?
Before school, before town meeting.
At the finance, at the finance public hearing.
Okay.
So some of that will be available at that point, and then obviously published. What I'm looking at here is it has fiscal year 15, 16, 17, and 18 budget in terms of ask and received, it doesn't have that level of detail in it.
Right. Because I think that would be really important to know, just to have some comparison to, you know, we're, this is what we need to level service. What do the other departments need to level service, and what are they actually getting? So what cuts were they forced to make? I think that would be really important information for residents. And then I just wanted to make one comment about the special ed costs. As a parent and a CPAC member, they're legally mandated costs, the number one thing you
Its employee benefits are covered by the town for all school employees.
can do to control them is to keep as many of our kids in the district as we can. So by providing a range of services for these kids, by having small class sizes so our
It's something that the Insurance Advisory Committee started out as an opportunity to
teachers are not completely overwhelmed and can differentiate instruction.
try to do a design, a plan design change to ultimately try to free up some additional
I mean, that's really our only control over those costs. So in being sort of penny wise and pound foolish, we are not able to realize those
money. The free up of money came, it was a little over, I think, $100,000.
cost savings, you know, in the years to come.
$133,000.
$133,000.
So I just wanted to make that comment, because I don't know if everybody that doesn't, isn't
That the, you know, fortunately, the union employees of that savings percentage, there's
highly involved in special ed realizes that by not keeping kids in district, you're kind
a whole agreement that we share some of the costs in future years, et cetera, et cetera.
of down the line, you're really
That's a good point.
The board decided to fund a known structural deficit, which the Finance Committee's been
Trying to think of a nice way to put it. You're not able to realize those savings, and you're going to, you're going to end
aware of, the Board of Selectmen have been aware of for three years now, and we've just,
up in a worse position than you are now, so.
Thank you.
it's been kind of band-aided.
Thank you.
And we ultimately were setting up the FY18 budget for a known structural deficit related
All right. Melissa Levine-Piram, I'm a resident in town, and I don't have kids in the school system.
to the DPW functions of cemetery parks.
And this is not going to be a popular question, but I'm coming at it from the point of wanting
So it was an opportunity to properly right-size that budget, I think, is the direction the
to be more informed, because I don't understand all the background on it. But my understanding is about a month ago, a little longer, School Committee negotiated
board chose.
Okay. But historically, usually when money's found in one area or department, don't they usually some school union contracts, and there was some found money of about $138,000 that the get a part of that back when it's in their favor?
No, so we pay 100 percent of the costs on the town side, we save $5,000, and we
board voted to then give 100 percent back to DPW instead of giving any back to the
have to split the $5,000.
schools. Well, I mean, I think sometimes that does historically happen, especially when And I just want to understand why that happened, as opposed to, you know, doing the traditional it's related to certain departments. historical 60-40 split some way, knowing that the schools were going to be facing And knowing that that deficit was going to be so huge, this was around the time where the budget had already been set and proposed for next year, so. this huge deficit in next year's budget. But I appreciate, I mean, I appreciate it, I'm just trying to understand it better.
No, I can appreciate that, but the last two years, when we had to increase the budget by 22 percent, did the School Committee, the School budget contribute anything to that?
Okay.
No, the town absorbed the 22 percent. So it's an effort to, you know, to, you know, do an equitable budget and address, the town still has, you know, significant shortage areas. One of them was in the public works cemetery parks, which, as I said, Finance Committee has been asking about, we've been trying to come up with strategies, but slowly been, when we've been able to do it in budgets, we haven't been able to fully fund it properly. And that was an opportunity to do it in FY18. I will say, you know, as available revenue has come up in the past, and it hasn't been related to health insurance, because we've pretty much have needed to find money to cover health insurance, the last two years have had a 22 percent increase. This year, we were faced with a significant amount, and we would have been cutting even more out of both sides if the unions didn't agree to make plan design changes. So that was, you know, a big win in that sense of things. We would have been talking about reducing budgets all around. But, you know, the board decided to address a structural deficit.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. And just before we go on, I just want to be fair to the Board of Selectmen. So tonight, we're talking about the school budget. So as far as I completely agree and look forward to the discussions in the fall about sort of the direction of the town and what do we want to invest in, I'd like to just direct questions at this point, just about the school budget, because that's what's on the agenda. So just to be fair to them, they didn't bring any other numbers, and they didn't, you know, they didn't prepare for anything else. So if we could just kind of focus us on the school budget, any questions? Brenda?
Good evening. I'm Brenda Waring. I live over on Taylor Road. I have three kids in the school system. First question is about the proposed savings account for the special ed. My child's on a 504, which is a federal disability act. Does that money go to accommodating the physical buildings that he will need for his disability?
For the stabilization fund?
Yes.
Oh, stable. So it goes to any sort of special ed costs. So it could be out-of-district tuition, it could be special ed transportation, it could be accommodations for special ed students.
So, Michelle, to be clear, though, the 504, Section 504 of the ADA is not special, ADA, it's not special education, it's a separate law, so it wouldn't go towards those expenses, those still have to come out of the general budget. But we do budget for those needs through the general budget.
And those are still legally protected.
And they're legally protected.
It's just legally protected differently. In doing this legislation at the state level, they chose to set up these, or allow districts to set up these accounts for a legally protected class of one kind, but not of the other kind. So there's no change in sort of that aspect. The 504, you know, is still a legal document that we need to provide, and we'll provide those accommodations for, to make sure that he's able to make effective progress.
Okay. The second question I had is, of all of the students that are being educated outside of Maynard, does the School Committee know what percentage are going to actual charter schools and they are not special ed children?
Are you asking how many charter school kids we have?
How many children from Maynard does Maynard pay for to go to a charter school?
So I can't answer that number question, but the first part of it is that the 225, that is the 275?
275.
275? I keep wanting to skip 50,000. The 275 is for out-of-district special education students specifically, and does not incorporate, include any charter students. So those two are completely separate.
We do have all the charter school numbers, we have like the number of kids attending ASABET, we have all that, we just don't have it tonight. But that's, that's no problem providing.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding your question, though.
Okay, so I guess my question is, is of the 50 or 62 percent of the town budget Right. the kids that were educating outside of the Maynard public schools, does the charter school cost, is that a large cost, or is that nominal?
Mike, do you want to?
Sure.
Because we actually happened to talk about this last night.
You live on the cherry sheet, Officer.
Yeah, on the cherry sheet, which is what the state gives us, is what you're talking about.
So, Mike, just tell everybody who you are for those who don't know.
I'm Mike Cuzell, I am the Finance Director for the town of Maynard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Every year you get, they call the cherry sheet, and on that cherry sheet, they tell you what your revenue is going to be, they're going to give you, and they give you assessments. For instance, I'll give you an example of what it's costing you. Right now, next year, you are going to be assessed $600,000. That's $300,000 more than you were paying last year. Recently, they increased Chapter 70 by 160. You know what the increase in charter school assessment was? $160,000. The net, to Maynard, was zero. Two years ago, you had ASABET, we weren't paying for debt, 200,000. So basically, what's happened in the last two years, 600,000 or more is basically ASABET, debt, and you're talking the charter school. 600,000 in two years. The increase from last year to this year for charter school assessment from the state in one year is close to $300,000. And ASABET went down because it, and that went down. But just that alone is $300,000. So for every dollar they're giving us back, they're taking it away.
So the bottom line for Maynard is that we're sending money outside of the town?
Exactly.
Yeah, a significant portion of that is the advanced math science gap.
Right, next year, it'll be $600,000. The state, we will get back as part of the money, the new thing, maybe a quarter of it. Last year, you got back out of maybe $400,000, $35,000.
And so this last comment question is directed towards the Selectmen. Thank you for serving our community. I just want to make that highlight point, is that more and more families in Maynard, because they're concerned about their children's education, are looking to, Mr. Sweet, I'm speaking.
I'm listening, thank you.
Are looking to send their children to other school systems so that I know that they're well cared for and they're well educated. If the more children leave the town of Maynard, that means Maynard's going to start losing more and more money to the charter schools. Keep that in mind. The other thing is, my child's not on special ed, he's actually on a 504 because he has a disability. But his disability requires that he has a small classroom size so that he can hear appropriately. If he is in a large classroom size, by federal law, he is not getting full access to the curriculum, and Maynard will have to pay for him to go to another school. Again, another impact of not funding the schools. The other comment I want to make is that, shame on you, Mr. Sweet, for being so flippant to the School Committee and to the parents sitting here in your community. We appreciate the water that comes out of our faucet. I appreciate the roads, I appreciate the firemen and the policemen that have given my infant CPR. We are not shortsighted, we are not spoiled. All we are asking is that our children, who will be taking care of you when you're elder, are well educated. Now, I have paid attention to your stellar work for this town. I know that you have saved just by consolidating the waste with larger surrounding towns over $80,000 about three or four years ago. You outsourced. The School Committee has made it clear that we can't outsource our schools. We're landlocked. So it's to the Town Selectmen and to Mr. Sweet. I'm asking you that you start looking at other ways to save money, meaning outsourcing. Figure it out. Make it so that a small town like Maynard can have a stellar school system and still fiscally survive. And we are not spoiled, and we appreciate the water that comes out of our faucets. Don't belittle us.
So I just wanted to, I guess, you know, I don't want to keep us here all night. I did want to just ask a clarifying question about the $133,000. So, you know, I think everyone had heard that the money was given to the DPW, so I Again, another impact of not funding the schools. The other comment I want to make is that shame on you, Mr. Sweet, for being so flippant to the school committee and to the parents sitting here in your community. We appreciate the water that comes out of our faucet. I appreciate the roads. I appreciate the firemen and the policemen that have given my infant CPR. We are not short sighted. We are not spoiled. All we are asking is that our children, who will be taking care of you when you're elder, are well educated. Now, I have paid attention to your stellar work for this town. I know that you have saved just by consolidating the waste with larger surrounding towns over 80,000 about three or four years ago. You outsourced. The school committee has made it clear that we can't outsource our schools. We're landlocked. So it's to the town selectmen and to Mr. Sweet. I'm asking you that you start looking at other ways to save money, meaning outsourcing. Figure it out. Make it so that a small town like Maynard can have a stellar school system and still fiscally survive. And we are not spoiled, and we appreciate the water that comes out of our faucets. Don't belittle us.
So I just wanted to, I guess, you know, I don't want to keep us here all night. I did want to just ask a clarifying question about the 133,000. So, you know, I think everyone had heard that the money was given to the DPW. So I just want to clearly understand, it was literally, it was given more, it was given for cemetery services, whether that's personnel or equipment, it really doesn't matter to me. Is there, and I don't, you know, I keep getting put in office, and I certainly don't expect to be popular, asking this question with you folks, but is there any chance that you will reconsider some of that funding? Because I think that we could do a lot with some of that funding. I understand if you need to think about it, but we could really make a dent in not laying off music, arts, and things like that that are directly impacting the kids. So I'm just respectfully asking that you reconsider the cemetery allocation, knowing full well you have just as many difficult choices to make as we do. I say it with the utmost respect, but I do know that a lot of the savings from the healthcare negotiations came from the employees, and most of the employees are the teachers. So I do see a little bit of a fairness thing there. But I, you know, I full well know that the difficult questions and discussions are really next year. But we could put a lot of use to that money.
Thank you for your comment, and I want to be fair to myself because, and no disrespect to my colleagues whatsoever, they made decisions that they made. But when that money came up, I want it known by the public that I tried to get some of the money allocated to the schools. And for reasons Kevin explained, that the rest of the board didn't agree. And that's okay from, you know, from the perspective of the way the process works. But I certainly would not hesitate to have the board bring up that money again when we have an opportunity to do so.
That's very nice. I'll probably get you a couple of votes next week.
There's nothing to do with votes.
But anyway, anybody else?
I got a comment, Chris, would mine? So yes, I actually voted no to give that money back to the schools. I have my reasons for doing that. But one thing I did get outvoted on was 150,000 that's going to an outside consultant that I didn't think was appropriate, but the board decided to do it. So, you know, 133, 150, there's more money there we could have used. So, but I do believe that you did vote for the 150 to go outside the town. So if we're going to play tit for tat about who does the best things for the town, let's be very careful, because we all have decisions we make, we all have the reasons we do it, but we try to do it for the best intentions.
Jason? Timothy? Next?
I've actually got a general question.
Hold on, hold on. Mrs. Mancini was, Mrs. Mancini was waiting patiently. I'm sorry, Jamal.
I don't, I don't know if I want to speak. I just had a question. I'm short.
I'm sorry.
Just don't hurt yourself. We have a student helper.
You're going to go for it? I want to take your job.
Need to get some better AV equipment in town. Just.
Do not, do not.
AV equipment is actually the newest stuff we own.
Do not press my buttons, woman.
It's a sore subject. I think so. Oh, good. Thanks. Hi, I'm Maureen.
Maynard High School students, everybody.
She's a volunteer. My name is Maureen Mancini. I have two kids in the schools, and I get it, I work for a for-profit hospital. That's a fun place to be these days. But does this line item here, does this address the 675,000?
Yes.
So this gets us to where we?
Yes.
To be. Okay. So that's fabulous work, and I know that none of that was easy. But one of the questions I was going to ask, but if this is here, then I guess it's, it's just hard to nickel and dime your way to 675,000. So, and I'm guilty of coming to only these big, popular meetings because I just, I don't understand a lot about it, but I hope that we do put a little more forethought into it next year, because I, I do think that we don't want to be in this position again. So if these were the cuts, then we would be to where we would need to be?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Jamal? Sorry.
Just, yeah, just a general question. I'm just wondering, I know that you guys, the board in the past, has been very generous as far as when we come up with the initial budget request, and then there's a shortfall between the time that, that budget number will get, goes out to between the end of the budget season, June 30. I know that you guys have been very good, very generous in the past about finding some money, some savings, and kicking it over to the school. You may not be able to answer this question right now, but just staying positive and knowing that you guys have a good track record in that, I'm wondering if there are any possible things, and I won't hold you to it, anything that's said tonight, but just things that you guys are thinking of that you may be able to kick over to the school side because you have such a good track record of the past few years.
That's one of the reasons why I reached out to Kate today, because they're in their budget, and they've, they've got to clean that up. And typically, we, we get that type of information towards the end of May, beginning of June. And then that's, you know, that's when we've been in the past, been able to share some of those, you know, unexpected revenues. So that's, you know, we're not, my, my email to Kate was, you know, I'm, I'm not going to hold you to it just with what you just said, I'm not, you know, nothing to bank on, but what, you know, what are our wish, whatever our possibilities and probabilities. And she said, you know, she was in, she was, she came out of the meeting and called me back and was, you know, sent me an email and said, look, I got to go back in, but we'll talk about it next week, and we'll, we should have a better idea. So, I mean, you know, every year, we're, we're in this position, and we've been in this position the last three or four years, where the, the ask has been, you know, more than we were able to put up in February, because we've had this meeting every February, and usually we get a, you know, there's something that follows, and we're in the same position. It's a little, it's a little worse this time. And then the additional 275 that you guys found out the same night I came to your meeting, which was kind of a shock to all of you and to me as well, to make it up to 600 and somewhat thousand dollars is, is huge. But when we find out those numbers, I mean, we certainly, in the past, we've shown that we're more than willing to, you know, give back to the schools and, and provide that needed revenue to get back towards where you need to get. So I don't think that there's any of the five of us that would suggest we won't continue that pattern this year, but we just don't have the numbers.
And I think.
One comment. Kevin, confirm this. The cherry sheet came out just, what, a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, which is basically the, the House of Representatives budget. And typically, there's some happiness there that you say, hey, there might be some additional revenue that's coming. My, my recollection, Kevin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was like 9,000 increase in chapter 70 funds.
Correct.
For the town, so there's.
19300.
There's nothing coming from the state relative to any substantive amount. So, and that's where, but there are pieces of legislation that can help us, help us into the future. And I think that's important for all of us to be educated on, for the public to be educated on, as well as to, you know, lobby our legislators on to hopefully be able to help us in the future.
Yeah, and I wanted to jump on what, Chris, you just opened, and David, you picked up on. If you don't follow Kate Hogan on social media, she does a really good job of talking about all of the work that she's trying to do to help our cities and towns. And I'm a teacher, so I follow education funding pretty closely. A couple of the legislative options that the Commonwealth is looking at right now is actually fixing the funding formula for the foundation budget, which hasn't been addressed in about 30 years. Independent conservative fiscal groups are predicting and estimating that our schools have been underfunded between one and a half and $2 billion per year since recent memory. So it's not just, our, our situation is dire. I'm not trying to make light of the situation, but it's, it's also fair to say that our town is not unique in, in the concerns. So please, pick up the phone, call Jamie. Pick up the phone, call Kate. If you don't want to pick up the phone, I don't like talking on the phone, send an email. Send a social media message, do something. Let them know that we're thinking about it, because they're also looking at the funding formula for charter schools. We're supposed to get reimbursed so much more than we actually do on our charter school spending. They're looking at the, the funding and the reimbursement for special education costs. Please, 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 help us hold our legislators' feet to the fire and help them understand that we consider it really, really important, because every dollar, whether it's 9,400 or whatever it turns out to be this year, is valuable. It saves a program, it saves a teacher's position, you know, small amounts add up very quickly. So please, just help us out. I'd really appreciate it.
The, the foundation budget that, that Justin was talking about, there's a, there's several links on social media, and you can just, you know, you can look it up just by entering, you know, Googling the foundation budget in Massachusetts. And there's opportunities in those links for you to communicate directly to, you know, the state senators and the state representatives that make these decisions. And it's a, it's a push across the state, because every community in Massachusetts is affected by that, that budget and that shortfall, that the formula is woefully out of date, and the, the numbers that Justin was talking about, I don't even know that they touched the surface statewide of what, you know, what the kids and the students in the state are missing out on based on the fact that the formulator is so poor and outdated. So just the foundation budget, look it up and, and send out, you know, send out a letter to Kate. I know she loves emails and Jamie, you know, and it, hopefully, it provides an impetus for change, because without it, who knows when, how long this continues.
Thank you, Chris.
Bob?
Hi, I'm Bob McCarthy from the Finance Committee. I've been trying to figure out a way to state this. These are difficult discussions, and obviously, a lot of people putting in a lot of extra effort, volunteers, I might add, many of them, and even the paid workers working diligent hours, many crazy hours, frankly, to try to balance these budgets and deal with these tough decisions. I don't think anybody up here is going to disagree with me. Maybe we have differences of opinion on where 20,000 or even 130,000 may be spent. But Justin, you kind of stole my thunder in that. Sorry, Bob. That's okay, Justin. It's really, in this case, perfect. Maybe it's a segue for me. But I think that when I look at this, I've been at this 10 years. I hate to admit that, because you'd think it'd straighten something out in that amount of time. It takes about that amount of time, I hate to say it, to really get to the bottom of, you know, what really matters, right? Where are we going to be able to deal with these issues? And it troubles me if we start basically doing tit for tat. I saw that happen here tonight. It's inevitable when there's a small pie. But it's also, you know, a self fulfilling prophecy to start to look at things like we can find a way to make up for this by taking from the town to get from the schools or vice versa. So, with the real, real problem we have here is we don't have enough revenue to cover. We have 1.35 million. 1.05 of that, if it was going to go to the schools, which would be 6.25%, not level, you know, it's level service, not really the funding even they need, isn't going to do it. And 130,000 isn't going to make a difference. Now, that's the only thing I would disagree with you, Justin, is it doesn't, little bits don't add up as fast as you want. You have to look at the big budget drivers, and then you have to look at revenue. And honestly, the more we fight about the smaller pieces of the pie, the further behind we're going to get, because that's where our energy should go. So when we talk about forums, and we talk about our services, and we talk about what revenue is really available without breaking the backs of property taxpayers, then there are tough decisions to make, and we need help from the outside. So we need to organize as, you know, a community, and go to the state and federal levels, and look at better revenues for businesses in town. That's all there is to it. Honestly, the big budget numbers, the big budget drivers are salaries and employee benefits. The rest of it adds up, don't get me wrong, but those are the big ones. And if we can't afford it, we can't afford it. We've got to look for better revenue sources. 10 years of service, that's all.
Thank you.
Bob, in fairness, I think you said that my first year on FinCom.
I probably did.
You've been, you've been, you've been a sage.
If I could, just real quick, just to add on to Bob's comments, which I think he did a nice job presenting. One thing, in FY '18, I talked about revenue, is this year, the actual new growth number is less than what our anticipated new growth number was as well. And the way that revenue comes from is, you know, a prop two and a half percent and plus new growth. And the new growth number this year came in even under a conservative estimate. So that's why things, as you said, is a new development business. That's why, that's all critical to property tax and, you know, budgets and everything, just to be able to get that new growth and additional revenue that we currently don't have. So hopefully, we can continue, from an economic development standpoint, to continue to foster that and, and see some of that come to light. I'm hopeful the next round, we'll have some better new growth numbers, just seeing what construction's happening in town and things like that. But that just kind of adds to, to Bob's point. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alana Gustafson, and I want to first say thank you to everybody for this joint meeting and making an additional meeting for everybody to come to. When we talk about moving forward in the budget process for next year, I'm wondering if the way that it works now, all the different departments give them what they need, and then they say, what we have, here's what you may have. But at that point, the Board of Selectmen don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, when there's a shortfall, and hopefully, with more revenue in town, there won't be so many going forward. But when there is a shortfall, you don't know at that point what the departments are going to cut, correct? You just say, here's your pot. So I'm wondering if we can build in time in the budget process to then have all of the boards come back to you and say, okay, with that, here is what we have to cut. And then you can see all the things that have to cut and perhaps make adjustments at that point, when the cut is, say, you know, a vice principal or, or something for the, for the schools, but it's like, I don't know, a cemetery or a truck, I don't want to pick on the DPW, you're great DPW. But, you know, you can look, you can then look with a different eye, when it's not just dollars, but it's, this is what the school would have to cut to meet their, what you gave them. This is what the DPW would, this is what the police would have to cut, this is what the fire would have to cut. And then you can say with better knowledge, okay, that cut is worse than that one, and maybe make some adjustments at that point. That's my thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to say, and I'm not speaking for anybody other than, we've had discussions, and basically, I agree with one statement that was made. It's a revenue problem, because you're going to, you can cut and cut all you want unless you get more revenue. And maybe the best example I can give you, I came to Massachusetts in '75 in Acton. First six years, they had six overrides, three of them failed. Three. I lived in Acton when there were between Littleton Line and the Concord Rotary, 12 buildings. You all know what it looks like now. A decision was made after six years and three failed overrides, it wasn't an expense problem anymore. The problem was, they needed more revenue. So two things were created. One is a committee made up of FinCom, school committee, Board of Selectmen, which they can, have continued to meet since 1981. The second thing they made a decision is that we've got to generate more revenue, like Kevin said. It's that simple. Because otherwise, if we don't generate more revenue and the state doesn't give us more money, you're going to be back making, you know, talking in this conversation again. So, I mean, it's nice to talk about expenses, and it's nice to talk about, but we've got to somehow figure out, you know, getting more money. Because if, you know, if we had 400,000 more in revenue this year, you wouldn't be, we wouldn't be talking about all these cuts. I'm like, I'm assuming, right? So, you know, it's, it's, that's me speaking, you know, because I got to see the numbers every day. And I lose a lot of sleep, probably three to four hours a night now, Michelle, you know, and I'm, I look every day for more revenue. And, you know, you reach a point where, you know, unless something happens, unless we do 129 or something like that, and we can get more revenue and on a consistent basis, you know, that'll happen. I mean, I joke about winning the lottery for 80 million and giving half of it to the town of Maynard. That would be nice, but I don't see that happening, you know, I'll probably be long gone before that happens.
We can create a line for you to just buy lottery tickets for a while.
I said if I did that, you could, you could just name buildings after me and streets, but, you know, that's an issue. I mean, we, we've had conversations where everybody's, you know, saying bad expenses. And, you know, part of the reason why Michelle and I get along, because, you know, we look at it totally different. We look not just at ways to save money and expenses, we're, we're constantly looking at, you know, where can we additionally get more money? How can we generate it to do the things that people want to do? Because that's really what the issue is. We all know expenses aren't going to go down, simple as that. You know, they're not. So we've got to find ways to, you know, to generate more revenue. And, you know, I, like I said, I've lived, you know, in Acton, and I've been one of the few people probably sitting around here, maybe here, who've been through the regionalization and sewer wars, too. So I know firsthand what happened with regionalization and everything, too. You know, so it's not, you know, and I've seen what happens when people go back and forth on the expense side and, and what happens. I lost a lot of friends because of this, you know, that whole issue. But, you know, you, you know, somehow you've got to figure a way, you know, that, you know, it's not just an expense problem, as everybody's, you know, is making it. It's not.
Mike, if I may. Thank you.
Hello.
Quick, quick comments. You know, Bob started hitting on it, and Kevin was making a point about revenue. You know, the town spoke at town meeting, and whether you voted for it or you didn't vote for it, 129 Parker Street was passed with the thought that it's going to be an engine of growth for the town. So what I would say is, as important as the BOS meetings are and the school committee meetings are, I think folks need to understand the planning board meetings are extremely important to get involved with right now, because they're the body that's going to help push that project forward right now. And there's many in town who have commented to us, like, what's slowing us down? So as part of this whole small village here that we're all, we're all part of, we all need to chip in to make everything work correctly, we need to attend the planning board meetings and make sure that they're pushing the projects that the town voted for forward, and they're doing it in a competent manner. Because that 129 project, that's a huge incubator for us right now. We need that revenue, we need the growth. I think you would all agree about that. And I think that's part of what's being lost here. It's not just the Board of Selectmen's decision, it's not just the school committee with their budget, we're all intertwined here. So there's another faculty out there that has to be involved with making decisions for the town, and right now, it's in their hands. So I would encourage you to get involved and see where they're at about decisions on that. Thank you.
Meg?
Hi. My name's Meg Sullivan. I'm a teacher here at Fowler, and I also live in town. And thinking about the discussions about budget for all the departments, I, and I And thinking about the discussions about budget for all the departments, I, and I may be incorrect, but sometimes I think about the school budget as being a little bit different than some of the other town budgets, in that our budget, like we talked about, is mostly personnel, and it's not project-based. It's not that we're looking for money to fund a particular project, or an improvement project, or infrastructure project, is that we're really talking about personnel here. So when we're looking at the cuts that need to be made, and I was one of the teachers who was on one of those committees, looking at all of the things that the school spends money on, and trying to help the subcommittee come up with, at the time, it was $400,000 for us, and we didn't come close to it as we were thinking about it, is that when we're looking at people and their salaries, is that when we're making cuts based upon projections, is that we, or the school committee and the school district has to make those cuts by certain deadlines. And I know June 30th is sort of that end time, where all the money becomes a lot clearer. And then with, during the fiscal year, some money, like this $100,000 that's being talked about, comes up and can be used. And to be quite honest, that $100,000 can be useful for the school, but to not have to make those cuts to begin with is actually far better for the school committee. Because even if we have final decisions June 30th, by that time, all the people on this list have already received notices that they're going to be laid off. All of the people have gone and looked for other jobs. The majority of them will go somewhere else. And by June 30th, when we say, "Wait, we actually have a little bit more money, we're able to fund this," they're gone, and then the pool that we're hiring out of is a lot smaller. And so perhaps when we're thinking about budgeting in the future, if we're thinking about how salaries are a major thing, and that's a really hard thing to cut and then give back, that perhaps some of the budgets for some of the other departments in the town might be able to be negotiated a little bit better in saying, "June 30th is when we're able to add to your budget, when we're able to give you more." Whereas for the school, I think we would much rather know upfront for planning what we're going to have, and what cuts will have to be made, and not try to lure people back in after they've already left. And I think that if there was a amount of money, $100,000, at that point, like in a future fiscal year, where we've already sort of known what we're going to have happen, and we're able to keep our salaries as they are, that it'd be a lot easier for perhaps the town to, you know, understand, to say, "Now we're funding those infrastructure projects that we couldn't necessarily guarantee initially, but now we're able to do those things." And so to prioritize people, because June 30th, in terms of school and people, it's like, we, we have hardly any people. And I've come in to interviews over the summer where our candidate pool is three people, and of those three people, we have to then say, "Is there anyone else that we can go for? Do we have to change the job listing?" Because we're not getting the people that we had, that we had already let go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For anyone that may not know, there have to be layoff notices that go out by May 1st for any anticipated cuts, whether or not they end up being made, so that people have a fair chance to look for other employment, and that's part of a negotiated contract, just to put that out there.
Hi, I'm Renee Lilly, I live in town. I have two children, one at Greimeta, one at Fowler. I'm also a teacher in another district. I'm looking at this list, and honestly, it's pretty disheartening. It's starting to make my family wonder if this is the right place to be, when we're faced with cuts like this. I'm not sure where this meeting's going tonight. I don't know if you're going to vote on whether or not you can have any more money anywhere to pass on to the schools. If not, I'm wondering if we have the same list, or worse, next year, because more kids have to be placed out of district, because we can't accommodate them here. I honestly don't know who they could cut next. There's not really, there are too many options left. So I guess my question is, thinking ahead to next year, I hear that you're going to have forums, that you're going to send surveys out, that you're going to be more, there's going to be more transparency. But if the revenue piece isn't going to change, are we going to have the same list next year, but it's going to be a whole lot more dire than it is this year?
Well, we're not going to vote on it. There's nothing to vote on tonight, as far as either of us, I guess, are concerned, as far as the revenue or the money sharing goes. I certainly hope that the list, there is no list next year. It'd be nice to have no piece of paper in your hand, you know. I mean, that would, that's the goal, and that's the goal every year. I don't know, you know, if we get there, if we don't get there, but I think what this was all about for us, for myself and Dawn and a couple of the members of the school committee, Terrence and I had met with just offline, to talk about some of these things, you know, this is all about, you know, sitting in front of you folks and saying, "We're all committed, the 10 of us are committed." And hopefully, you know, if, if any of the seats here and any of the faces here change in the next few weeks, based on the election next week, they will have the same commitment there as well. So that's really what we're here for. We're here to say, you know, "Look, we understand what, you know, what is going..." We're sitting here, we, there are neighbors here, with these neighbors, friends, relatives, you know, these are the people that we live with, too. So we, we understand the problems, and we're here to solve it. That's what we're here for. We're here to commit and make sure that everybody understands that we, as 10 people who were charged and elected by, by you folks, are committed to making sure that we've solved this problem. I mean, we know it's a problem.
Yep.
It's been a problem. We've been very fortunate in years past, recently, to be able to plug up most of those gaps and eliminate some of those cuts and make some savings for the school. And we're committed to try and do that again, but we don't control the revenue from the state. We control other things.
I understand.
Like Terrence said, you know, we control what we do with 129 Parker through our planning board. We have a great, you know, there's a lot of great things going on in the town through the Economic Development Committee and councils, and the cultural councils. There's a lot of things taking place in Maynard that are going to bring added revenues to the town. And we all, we all understand that. It's not going to be enough to close the gaps, but everybody, you know, is working towards that goal. And those things are all, you know, it's, it's nice to say we're a cultural district and be designated as such, but, but it's really nice when the cultural district is recognized by people who care about the arts and care about those types of things, and they come to our town and they generate revenue for us. That's, we know, all these things are aimed at those same type of things. It's not, you know, 129 Parker Street, I don't know what's going to happen there. You know, I know what, we voted twice, 50 to 1, to put the project there, and it's just dragging on. We need to, we need to increase the pace of that, obviously. There's a couple other developments that have potential to help the town in the future with, with revenue. So, you know, some of those things are taking place that haven't even really hit the public yet. There's something in the paper about it last week at our meeting. But those things are all the type of things that we're working with other people to build, so we don't have to have you back, and we don't have to sit with these guys and have these type of problems. You know, it'd be nice to sit here and congratulate ourselves in the school committee for not having to be back with the same problem. That's the goal.
I guess it's, I know that the $130,000 isn't going to fix everything, but when I hear that that money went to the cemetery, it's really hard to swallow. It's really hard to understand how that's your priority and that you really care. Yeah, and I also would love, I heard Mr. Donovan say that he had his reasons for voting, and I, and I watched the tape, and I saw four of you vote to give that money to the cemeteries. I actually didn't hear your reasons in that meeting, so I'd be really curious to hear what the reasons were. I don't know a lot about the cemeteries, I don't really go to cemeteries.
No.
I, I'm curious as to, as to why that was such a great need for our town.
I think, at the time that it was discussed, Kevin, Kevin's indication to us was that there was, it was to correct a budget discrepancy and a budget shortfall that had existed for several years in that department. And there was some, and there were different, you know, some moving around of the pieces, meaning people back and forth, and that corrected a budget, what was your word, Kevin? A structural deficit. A structural deficit in the budget. And that's what we use that money to correct. You know, I can say that, Megan...
People have jobs there. It's not just...
I understand that, but when you add $130,000 to it, are you adding jobs? Like, where, where is that money actually being spent on?
No, we're, we're correcting a shortfall. We were correcting a budget shortfall.
It just seems like if that's been for a few years, was this the year to do that?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, just to speak to that, we've been offsetting a structural deficit through a cemetery perpetual care account. When I'm talking about cemeteries, that's just one piece. It's the cemeteries, parks, and forestry. So it's the same folks that mow Crow Park, and it's the same folks that maintain fields in town, Coolidge Playground, Rio Playground, a significant thing more than just the cemetery. It's, it's considered Cemetery's Park Forestry Budget. It's a full-time foreman and a laborer that maintains a significant amount of space in town. And what we've been doing, and it hasn't been, you know, I mean, it's something that we've been aware of and have been known, trying to, to change that trend, was using a perpetual care, an unrestricted perpetual care account from cemeteries to continue to provide those services, knowing that we would have to make, you know, make that fully funded through the operating budget at some point. And the last couple of years, we've done that, and that, that is getting depleted rapidly. So it was an opportunity, as I said, to fix a known structural deficit that was, you know, inevitable, just continuing.
I don't know the, the actual definition of a structural deficit, but to me, this feels like a giant structural deficit for all of the kids in this town, many of whom who will grow up to live here, and it's, it's really hard to understand as a taxpayer that that was the decision that four of you made.
Hi, my name is Kristy Gilgeon, I'm a 4th grade teacher here. I'm the lead teacher for my team, and I think, I want to thank the school committee, because I can see that you're going for bat, going to bat for us. And I just want to paint a picture to the selectmen of what the school will look like next year, what the schools are going to look like. And I know that maybe this year, we don't have control, but this is maybe for next year, so we can think ahead. Because when I think about how disappointed and frustrating it is to look at all of those cuts in schools this year, and then I think about adding more to that next year, it is disheartening to the children who live in Maynard to think about what's going to become of the schools. And so I'm very passionate about it, so I'll try to keep it brief. But, and I can't go on Thursday, so I just want to say my piece now, because I have three kids of my own. But the problem really is, is that right now, we're going to cut a vice principal at this school, but we're adding an additional grade of 8th graders. So we're not, we're not talking about adding another grade of 3rd graders who get into their own little mucks, but 8th graders. These are adolescent kids. And if we cut our vice principal down to halftime, then that's going to have a major impact. Also, we've already cut our guidance counselors, so I'm wondering to myself, where is the support for these kids going to come from? I mean, there's a huge amount of social, emotional needs in our district, huge. I mean, beyond any, I've taught in different states, and this is beyond anything I've seen. It just gets more and more pronounced every year. Kids need more. And it's more than what can be provided in a regular general ed classroom. Sometimes we're constantly sending kids out to go talk to a counselor, or to go talk to the vice principal when they're, when they're literally throwing chairs across your room. I mean, and then I think ahead, and I'm like, "Wow, so we're only going to have a vice principal halftime." And then the class sizes are going to go up, and then the teachers are on ground, they're ground zero, you know? And, and we have the Common Core, and we have to teach these kids, and they have to pass their tests. And it's like, at what point do we put the children first? At what point do we stand up and say, "Maynard is going to be a town that stands up for their children." At what point are we going to prioritize this? And I don't know what it takes, because I'm a teacher, I'm not a budget guy, and I'm not an economics major. But I just have really serious concerns, not just about this year, but then if the revenue doesn't come in and we can't do it again next year, what is that going to look like for the kids? I mean, really, honestly, truly, being somebody who works with them every single day and sees the joy and the happiness and the success, but also the challenges, I think that we really need to think about what this looks like if we can't educate the whole child, if we're not providing library anymore, we're not providing music anymore. I mean, we're not providing even a vice principal, really, full-time. So I just have serious concerns about where our priorities lie in this beautiful town where people move to for a better life. I mean, I came here from California, we moved here to start a better life, where we could afford it. And we had to move out because of the taxes, and now I'm here as a teacher, and I'm like, "What is, what can we do? How can we work together to problem solve?" Because it just makes me sad, having been here for now, almost a decade, myself as a teacher. I just, I just am making a plea to, like, think about where we put the money and what matters, because I think the kids matter the most, and most of the people I've met are like third-generation Maynard people who have lived here and love it here, and are proud of their town. And it makes me kind of sad to think about, not just this year, but what's going to happen in future years if we don't make some changes and prioritize the education, so.
I do just want to say that, you can go right up, I'm just going to say this, and then you can, yes, you go ahead, that we're doing this, we're all very, they're very aware, and I think that it's good that we have these conversations, so we can really look at what we're doing for next year. And again, there, as you hear, there are no guarantees, but they're willing to be here and hear from you guys. So I just think we need to also make sure, we give them the credit of that, and, and we're asking hard questions, we appreciate that you're willing to be here for us to have the joint meeting and do that.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Wayne. Sorry, I've got a little bit of allergies. And I spoke at our last meeting. One thing I'm hearing about is the need to raise revenue, sorry, but also the special education outplacement costs. And I don't know if this is an appropriate conversation for this meeting tonight, but I am curious, what, what plans are you guys making to maybe move things more in-house to save money in the future? To build programming.
Thank you.
So I work, the Director of People's Services, Carol Gayhan, looks constantly at the population of students that we have. The other sort of challenge with special education is that the, the needs of students and the trends of those needs change over time. So we have a very robust program for lots of students that we had previously, and so now what we're doing is figuring out what are those trends that we're seeing now, where we might be able to, it might be fiscally responsible to design an in-house program. And so she's working on some of those pieces. I don't know what specific programs we might be bringing out or bringing in, but that's always something that is very, you know, at the forefront of our budget. You know, Jennifer O'Leary spoke very eloquently about the base of education. From my seat as the curriculum director, the best thing that we can do is to improve our Tier 1 instruction, which includes not only the first part of instruction, but when kids don't get it the first time, what can we then do? And then some Tier 2 services. And that is something that we're working very hard with. We're working to change the kinds of instruction that we're giving, so that we're moving more towards an inquiry-based model for science, for example, so that we're writing in the content areas, so that they're developing those skills over time, so that education isn't being given in sort of like, "This is math, this is English, this is science," but something more total, which is how we live it in the adult world, and how our children, before they get to us in school, live learning as well. You know, I, one of the things that we have to do, not unique to Maynard, but, and not unique to Massachusetts, but with the change to what is traditionally called the Common Core, but the 2011 state frameworks, we have upped the ante on our teachers in terms of how they teach, particularly at the elementary level, how they teach math. So we're expecting them to teach numeracy in the same way they teach literacy. Most of our elementary teachers have degrees or significant coursework in literacy. Very few of them have those degrees or coursework in numeracy. And so those are some of the other things that we have to do, so we can start to address those. We mentioned this at the joint budget meeting in February, those are things that we can do, but it's going to take us time. I think, Bob, you had said 10 to 12 years, which I don't disagree with that, for us to start seeing those savings.
And by the way, you're totally speaking my language, too.
Oh, good.
Because I'm a reading specialist, so I'm, I'm one of those Tier 1 people.
Okay.
So I totally get it. So thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Of course.
I, I just wanted to say, no, this is a hard, it's always a hard, hard time of year when we, you know, get the money, we look at those things on, on paper. For folks who might not have been at our, at our last school committee meeting, I do want to point out, there, there are some districts in the state that are really close to, so when we talk about the foundation budget, that is what the state kind of sets as our, our minimum. It's the minimum amount that the town has to spend on education. We get part of that from the state through what we call Chapter 70 funding, and that's what these guys were talking about earlier. Right now, there's a bill on the table that could increase our Chapter 70 funding by 8% for Maynard, if that passes, which ends up being around $400,000. It's not huge, but 8% over what we're getting currently for Chapter 70. But I did want to say that our current budget, you know, it's, it's easy to kind of see the, obviously, there are bad things on this list, and I, it's so hard to sit here and to hear from everybody who's affected and impacted by them. At the same time, Maynard's actual budget is about 33% above what the state sets for our foundation budget. And there are many communities like that, because the state's numbers run pretty low. What they set is, is, is our estimated budget. There are some towns that are closer to their foundation budget. So I'm not saying that I don't want to bring back the things on this list, that I don't want to add and grow our programs, but I hear Renee's concern when she's like, "Oh, should we be moving, you know, leaving Maynard?" And, and I'd say, "The sky's not falling yet." I've said this to the Board of Selectmen, I said, "The sky is not falling yet." But if I say it's falling, you better believe me that it's falling, as we're trying to, to build these bridges and work together. So when we made a lot of the decisions about the items on this list, we reached out to other communities and found out some things about their staffing numbers. And I'm not saying I want to be like other communities, because I think part of what makes Maynard great is that we haven't regionalized, we have a small system, and we're able to do a lot of the things we do. But I just want to put that out there, again, not to disparage what anybody has said in terms of concerns, but just to say, "The sky's not falling yet."
Mary, all things being equal, the fund, the foundation budget would be "The sky is falling." So the fact that we're 33% above is the number that I'm not comfortable even remotely entertaining the idea of going below. So yes, we, we're not in a bad place, but we're getting there. So I, I think it's, it's important to point that out, that yes, we are receiving more funding than we're, you know, legally mandated. But let's just be very careful throwing the idea of foundation budget-level funding around, because that would be the dark ages.
So...
So, you know, at this point, I think we've had a lot of public comment, I think it's pretty similar, the comments, you know, so I'm happy, you know, adjourning the meeting. I just want to reiterate my request that you reconsider your $130,000. I have to ask, based on the people who put me here, if you'd like us to be at a meeting, you know, we're happy to go, whatever really you can do to help us, we know you'll do our best. We know you'll do your best, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?